I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Tenot, roll call. All members present back here, some questions at all. Pat's missing. So tonight, we have a special presentation by CLA.
Do you do a conference? Just stand or is that okay?
However, it works for you.
I'll do this. I know we haven't presented, I'm not even sure the last time we presented to the board. So just something we do periodically, anywhere, some years we do it everywhere in some districts. So you should have received the financial statements, the executive summary, and the management representation letter. So I'm just going to quickly go through this. If you have any questions, you can feel free to ask now, or if there's other questions, Allison or Nick, they both have my contact information. You can definitely reach out. So page one of the financial statements, this is our independent auditor's report. Really, the purpose of the audit, so we talk about how we've audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the school district of Algoa as of for the year ended June 30th, 2021. Management's responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements. We give an opinion. On the top of the page two, you'll see there's an opinion. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the district. That's a clean, unmodified opinion, the best opinion we can provide from a financial standpoint. There's a bunch of other language in there, but I'm not going to go through all of that. So then, from a financial standpoint, there's page five and six is what we call our government-wide financial statements. Seven is all the long-term debt, all your capital assets, those types of things. The numbers aren't very understandable, I guess, in some regards, because you have a proportionate share of the Wisconsin retirement system. It's a non-cash type item, it's confusing, you've got the deferred inflows and outflows. So we like to look at the operations of what you budget for, what you deal with on a daily basis. And that starts on page seven. So your general fund finished the year with a fund balance of about 3.8 million. That's in comparison to, I'm just going to give you the exact number, 3.2 million as of June 30th, 2020. So we'd like to look at, from what's a good fund balance perspective, what is that? We like to say about 15 to 30% of general fund expenditures is a good range, which sounds like a big range, 15%. But that's really dependent upon what your cash flows are. Taxes, state aids, all those types of things that you, say, federal aid in terms of when those come in and what you need. Because that unassigned fund balance is really your rainy day fund for, you know, capital emergencies, those types of things, COVID, when you don't know what's really going to happen. You're currently at about 40, so a very healthy fund balance. Obviously, that can change, you know, depending on building needs, things like that, that are outside of a referendum realm. So keep that in mind, try not to use that fund balance to balance your budget unless you absolutely have to. You know, try to identify things that can be one-time type items to use that up at some point. Page nine, you'll see that your fund balance obviously changed by about 600,000. Some of that in school districts, that can vary year to year, depending upon bank agencies and teacher positions, enrollment, all the different things with tuition and open enrollment and all that. So 600,000 other swing is not too bad. Some districts, I mean, you only made a transfer into your long-term capital improvements about 75,000, excuse me. Some districts will go a little bigger on that to kind of bring that change in fund balance down, which is an option too, and they'll use that to offset any future referendum projects or plans that they have. So your long-term capital improvement, you did use some of that this year. That was the first year that it could be used. So you're down to about 127,000. So again, you have some options in terms of some flexibility there. Any questions on that at all? Otherwise, in the back, as part of the audit, we also look at internal controls. So we're required to provide a report on that internal control. It's on page 52. We don't give an opinion on those financial, on those controls. We provide any suggestions, things like that. The one big thing in the past year has been trying to overcome the segregation of duties with a small environment. Obviously, you've had some turnover now. That becomes challenging, but that's where the board can come into play in terms of how does your board, how does Nick help in terms of review, approval, mitigating controls from that regard? So the findings that we do have here, we just have the one, which is the preparation of the financial report, meaning we prepared this report. Very common, same thing with the segregation duties. I mean, it's, sometimes it's unbearable. So nothing that is of true concern, as long as you try to do, have the mitigating controls as much as possible. Now, the other report is, and the district's been a single audit. I think you first started being a single audit again last year in 2020. Otherwise, it kind of worked. You just had the state compliance requirements for the last five years or so since uniform guidance has been in play. But you, again, with the amount of federal funding, with the Essar funding, the food service money, those types of things. So we do, based off of a risk-based approach, based off of thresholds that we have to follow, we do look at a number of your state and federal programs, and we do have to disclose any noncompliance or any issues here as well. And we did not have any of those for the year ended June 30th, 2021. The one thing that I like to talk, talk to my clients about with the increase in the funding is continue to make sure that your internal controls suit the technology, suit the grant funding and the departments that you have. Because sometimes you get departments involved who aren't really in the financial area, which is great, but how do you make sure that your controls are still happening? And with the amount of funding that's come through, it's been very easy for some districts to kind of get caught, and you don't want to get caught and end up with a finding in that regard. So just, I'm not saying there is an issue, but just something to be aware of. Make sure you continue to look at that and evaluate how that has changed over time. Then, that's the bound financial report. There's a single page that you would have received on the findings. That's required to be submitted to the federal government on the Clearinghouse website. So just informational. The executive summary is basically a summary of what I just went through from the audit opinion, internal controls, and the single audit. And then also discloses some accounting estimates that are included in that. And those are your useful life or your capital assets, your OPEB plan that you have, which is fully funded at this point, net pension with the Wisconsin retirement system, and the fair value of the investments which relates to the OPEB. No disagreements performing with management and no difficulties performing the audit. The rest of this, there's some graphs in the executive summary, basically summarizing kind of what I just did. And then the last part is the representation letter of management taking the shots. Any questions?
So absolutely no cause? I mean, everything is looking well and we're in great shape.
I really don't have a whole lot of bad. Again, I like to, the warning is continue to evaluate your internal controls and make sure that they're to the standard that you feel comfortable with a lot of the change and with technology changes. And I mean, with COVID, that's created, you know, some remote work environments and making sure that you're not forgetting about those. So, but no major concerns right now on this phone, so.
And when will our next audit be?
Well, hopefully you don't get picked for that membership audit. Nick likes so much. That list comes out in a few weeks, so. But otherwise, it would be in, we would start looking at it in June, July. So, you guys have time.
Thank you.
Is there ever any questions? Feel free to reach out.
Yeah. Appreciate you coming. Okay, we don't have Pat here, so we will not have a board correspondent report. Although I think I would like to bring up some things that I saw in terms of some legislative bills that, just wondering. I mean, I don't think they've passed, they've gone Assembly and Senate, so might die. But it was concerning requiring gun safety instruction in the schools. And I just, I don't really understand where that's coming from. Certainly, I'm all for gun safety, and I'm not against guns. But I would think that if we were going to have gun safety classes in school, we'd have to have guns in the school, wouldn't we? I mean, wouldn't we? And then the other...
I don't really know where they're going with that, so I think it's just spaghetti on a wall.
Maybe it's more like sex education, where you're not expecting to have sex in school.
Yeah, but you don't have to bring in guns for that education. I don't know, I just, I was surprised to see that. The other thing along those lines was moving the age for concealed carry from 21 down to 18, which again, why? And...
I think that would present a lot of issues for schools.
Well, that's my...
With 18-year-olds.
Sure.
Well, right. And then, and then the, and then the concealed carry being allowed on school grounds? I don't know if that was inside the school or just in the parking lot? Or if you had a concealed carry license, you could have a gun?
It might be a recycled effort from a few years ago when they had the law enforcement, if you remember that whole conversation around whether or not they should be able to have concealed weapons in school. So that may be, but for me to tell you what a state legislator is thinking in this day and age, I'm not quite.
Yeah, I just didn't know what the background was on even bringing that up. It just seems to me like in an era where we're having some really unfortunate incidences happen with the mental health problems and all of that, that yes, gun safety of anybody that's going to handle a gun is certainly important because we also have some really tragic accidents with people who aren't aware of it. But I don't know. That was the only thing that caught my eye legislatively. Board CISA report.
Couple of things, we had a booth at the convention. I don't know, I didn't go, I don't know what the attendance was, but they did have a booth there. Dr. Jill Utterly, who was the state superintendent of schools at the last PAC meeting. We were working on, CISA's working on the National Science Foundation grant, which targets first and second generation immigrants. We did not get the WEDC grant, which is the Wisconsin Economic Development Corp. It was for 9 million, it's for the creation or expansion of fab labs. We'll just reapply for that one. Computer Science Talent Ecosystem for Youth is looking to change their funding to include coding at home or school, and also fund computer science in early college. Jeff did say that as of a meeting two weeks ago on Wednesday, or two weeks ago, there were 45 superintendent openings in the state of Wisconsin, probably even more now. So our task, in my opinion, will not be easy. I can only hope that Nick and his team have put us in a position where we will look desirable for people out there that want to come and be a superintendent. Last but not least, we did hire a new superintendent of CISA, and her is Colleen Timm. She was our Director of Learning Services, and now she will step into Jeff's role.
Immediately?
No, he's on till the end of June.
Okay. And then on that coding changes, because of course, that's always sort of a near and dear thing to me. I would like to get that kind of education to especially our younger kids. So what was that all about?
It's a grant, the Computer Science Talent Ecosystem for Youth. And it's just a grant that we're trying to get, and that's what's, you know, is looking to fund coding in schools, so it'd be, you know, for the...
Accessible.
Accessible, at home, in school, and then they're trying to get into early college.
I think they just sponsored a few days, I think Mayport had one.
Yeah, they're trying to expand on that a little bit, you know, for all schools, so.
That'd be great. Questions for Mick?
That would be it.
Okay, student representative report.
See, this is our last one tonight.
Oh, yeah, I didn't even look to see. All right, well, Julia, good luck in the basketball. Misconceptions and rumors, the only thing that I wanted to clarify for people, there's been some talk about their questions, are we going to replace the business manager position? And I just wanted to clarify that, no, we have absolutely no intention of replacing the business manager position. We've started a different approach, a different organizational approach. We're contracting with an outside accounting firm, Baird, and then utilizing the expertise of our leadership teams as well as some bookkeeping in our business office. And giving the business responsibility and decision-making and accountability to the leadership and department heads has turned out to be a really wonderful change, I think. It's getting the money, the funds where they both, you know, where they're needed. Everybody's a little aware of what we have and what we don't have, and how we need to share. It's proven to be more efficient and effective, so I think, and more cost-effective because we're not paying the salary of a business manager salary and benefits. So at this point, no, we do not have any intention of having, posting a business manager position.
I believe there are a lot of small districts that do it this way, right? Also, so we're not the only one out there.
Right, it actually, lots of them do, yeah. Yeah, because for a district of this size...
Yes, yeah.
We can very, you know, very safely do that. It doesn't get out of hand. And of course, we're not, and we are depending on the outside expertise to keep us on track and audit and make sure that our operations are squeaky clean. So that we have another nice audit in June or July of our operations. Okay. Moving on to public participation, I had Marcia, I'm sorry, can you...
Kraus.
Kraus, okay.
Kraus, C-R-O-S-S.
Oh, Kraus.
When you talk about not replacing the business manager salary-wise, how is that comparative to a private source? So if you're going to outsource that cost, what is that comparison from a salary to that outsourced cost?
Outside sourcing is going to be about 75% savings, or more.
Okay.
So like, do you want dollar amounts, or...
Well, sure, that would be really great, but...
So former business manager made about 105,000. Right now, you're paying $2,000 a month from Baird, so that's 24,000. So that's more than 75% savings.
Considerable savings.
Considerable, yes.
Is that all you wanted to...
Well, it depends. Can I spew it all out right away?
You have three minutes.
I have three minutes, okay, so three minutes. Now, I'm here because I heard that there's been some resignations that have happened. And you just kind of alluded to that, that Nick is leaving.
Yeah.
Okay, confirm that.
This isn't, this isn't an interactive process, you, but yes, we can answer that, yes. Nick has informed us that he will not be continuing his contract after the end of this year.
After the end of the year?
Right, that is not, he has not resigned. It's a contractual thing, and he has informed us he will be at the end of June 30th no longer continuing his contract. And then I hope I clarified the business manager situation for you with what I just said.
Just financial, so you're recruiting for a person to come in and take his position? Salary-wise, are you going to be competitive in that area?
This isn't the back-and-forth discussion. I mean, if you want, if you, if you want to express all your concerns so that we are aware of the things you are concerned about, that is certainly okay. But this isn't a, this isn't a press conference, this is our meeting. You are certainly, you know...
Okay, so if I have a list of questions, who could I get those to?
I mean, what questions do you have about them being competitive for a superintendent salary?
Well, I'm just curious about what that's going to mean financially for the city of Algoa. What, how is that going to impact us?
The city?
So that's kind of my drive, well, my taxes. How's that going to affect my taxes?
It wouldn't affect your taxes at all, because it's, I mean, my salary is in our budget, which we've decreased our mill rate for nine years straight. So you're actually, your tax burden from a school district perspective has gone down. And I don't anticipate hiring a new superintendent to impact that at all. But I won't be here.
That cost would be comparative, once you leave, then that's...
That's not my decision, but I don't see the school board...
We don't have a crystal ball, but that would be our expectation.
Okay, so once your, my other question pertains to contracts. So once a contract is written for a particular individual in the school system, can that contract be rewritten at any point without any knowledge of anyone else?
Okay, we're getting into, if you want to contact Nick or whatever, I mean...
Sure, but the answer is yes, it's a mutually agreed-upon thing.
Okay.
But these are concerns, certainly you could talk with Nick on. This is, you know, this meeting needs to get onto its agenda. Okay, all right, not, we're not trying to hide anything, it's just different place, different time. And I hope we, the main things you were concerned about, we answered. Okay. Board president announcements. Well, I hope everybody had a relaxing holiday and some time with family, but now it's January and we need to sort of get to work. And so I would like to form an ad hoc Essar III committee, a working committee. I would like to get it going fairly quickly, have two meetings in February and a final in March with, because these Essar funds, it's a lot of money, and we have a lot of need, and the sooner we all get together and figure out what the best way to use it for the district is, you know, if we can get together and get some ideas going, we can maybe incorporate some of it in this next school year. I mean, because we'll be doing budgeting in the spring. And, and so we don't want to miss a school year of being able to apply some of these funds. I think Pat has made it very clear in the past, in terms of these Essar funds, and Nick has too, we have to use them, and then we get reimbursed. So that we have to be careful in, in what we are doing to make sure that we don't have a very unexpected no-thanks on our, you know, when we turn it in for the funding. So I want three board members on it, three leadership people. Nick, I think you'll have to be one of them, but the other could be volunteer or rotated through, especially the first couple of meetings. Three staff, again, volunteer, any staff members. And in terms of the leadership, Jesse, you might want to be part of one of them too. And three community members. I would encourage the people that are interested in a school board position that are going to be on the ballot in April to consider very strongly if they are able to be part of this committee. The funding does require community input, and I think whoever is on the committee, you know, community people can talk to the community members and make sure their ideas are brought forward. I want it to be a fairly structured, kind of like I said, a working committee. There is 26 pages of information in terms of how you have to meet the requirements to get the reimbursement, so the expectation would be anybody who is interested in the committee would come prepared, having read it. I know we had it attached to one of our Friday updates in December as a link, but we also could certainly provide it in a paper form to once, you know, to the committees. But coming with a general understanding, I'm not saying people have to know it back and forth, but a general understanding and some ideas to that first meeting. And then we keep the meetings to one to two hours max, probably hold them 5:00 or 5:30 so that community people that might have other jobs are able to attend. I know if we do something during the day that might limit some people. And then in March, our final meeting, come up with basically some recommendations for the finance committee to discuss in terms of the budgeting process. So, that being said, I would like to try and have the committee, let me see what a calendar, I don't really have a calendar here. The committee decided by the 4th of February, and then the first meeting the following, so I guess that would be the week of the 7. If there's any board members interested, please let me know. Otherwise, I did have some ideas and I will appoint, but I know...
Pat and I will both be down in Florida for the month of February, so...
Okay.
Take us out of the picture.
Okay, all right. So I will, I will leave it at that for the moment, but to let people think about it, like I said, it's going to be a working committee, we'll be brainstorming, bringing ideas, but, and then trying to make sure that they meet the Essar guidelines, at least within our own expertise. Because obviously, any ideas we have that are going to be going through and have dollar amounts attached to them, we will then move on and have a little more scrutiny on it. But I mean, we have what, how much, what's the dollar tag of what we could have available in Essar III?
836,000.
836,000 dollars. So my point being, we can use it, we have it until 2024, but if we have some good ideas and can use it to benefit our community, our, our school district, our kids, I don't want to lose it. If we don't use it, we lose it. So I want to get going on it so we can get going for this next year as well as the following year. If we have something really good going, we can continue it, we can evaluate, you know, obviously, so.
Barb, you want to explain what Essar means, what the Essar acronym means? Education, Elementary and Secondary School. Yeah, I'm just, because it's...
Yeah, I'm trying to remember.
CARES Act is where it came from.
From the what?
CARES.
CARES Act.
Yeah, it's, it's basically the extra funding that came from the federal government through all of the COVID funding. There's a big emphasis on making sure that kids who maybe lost, you know, a little bit of ground in terms of their education, that that's part of the thought. The mental health stress that everybody's feeling, I know that's a big part of it, so. Who do they contact if they want to be on the committee? What would be easiest? I think probably leadership and staff, and maybe even community members. Can that be to the school board? If anybody is particularly interested, notify me.
Essar stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief and Fund.
Thank you.
Essar is Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief.
Perfect. And we've had, it, there was an Essar I, there was an Essar II, and this is Essar III. So, okay. So please think about it, those of you in the community, especially those who are... especially those who are wanting to, um, maybe be on the board. And, um, we'll move forward after the fourth. Once I know who's all involved, we'll try and make the time work for everybody. Okay, moving on to administrative reports.
I'll start with our second, um, Friday in January people count. So preliminary, um, seven oh seven right now. It's consistent with what we were in the fall. I say preliminary because you're still waiting for other school districts to accurately reflect open enrollment. It's always a moving target. Staffing, uh, new hires, obviously, I don't want to steal the thunder of, uh, principals and people that are here tonight, but, um, just like I wrote in my, uh, letter to you, it's just really great to see that we have former students, um, coming back and, um, being a part of our team. It's cool to, uh, see that happening. And I think, um, certainly what we've done over the past ten, eleven years, has created some really great teaching candidates, so. Don't want to get that lost. Semester two, updates. It's a pretty long haul from now until spring break. Also, having to kind of endure the swings of COVID and what happens after we have breaks and things like that. I think our consistency has been there all along. It's to the point where now where we can predict things, so. It's a credit to our staff and admin for that. And, um, certainly everybody helping out as best they possibly can. Um, and then, you also, uh, that mentioned before, your superintendent search, um, is going well. I think you said that CISA had seven applicants?
Um, no, we had six and one dropped.
So we have ten, so I feel good about that. So, again, I think we, um, are doing a good job. And, um, I think the school districts should be proud of what's going on here. So you are attracting talent, uh, which is nice to see. The SRO, trial period, um, got some feedback about this. Just clearly, it's a trial period from February through the end of the school year to see if, um, it's something that is beneficial, um, and it meets, um.
And that's school resource officer.
Right. So, uh, I think we do things a little bit differently here. I'm not really afraid to say that. And I think it took some time to, um, get everybody on the same page about that. But, um, hopefully, uh, that goes as well as we think it will. Making sure that we have great officer involved in that, um, I think is a big, big deal. And we were able to do that, so, um, excited about what that'll look like this spring. And then obviously, past, um, June, obviously, that'll come back to you guys again and see what you want to do moving forward with that, but.
So will they be in both school buildings?
So it's basically a weekly allotment of time. So, um, you have three locations. Um, obviously, there are periods of the day and, um, you know, events going on at different places. Obviously, we want to make sure that we coordinate that accordingly. But, uh, the officer that's picked to do it, um, has been, is well-known by the students, so. Coordinate that with him, so. It's just, uh, trial period to kind of work the bugs out of it, if you will, so.
Questions for Nick? No? Sounds good. Okay, moving on, elementary principals report. Katie?
I'm going to jump down to my second agenda item, which is staffing update, because both Alexa and Cassie have been waiting very patiently for their formal introduction. Although I don't think they need much introduction, because like Nick mentioned, they moved to ten school here not too long ago. Alexa is going to be, um, well, she has officially at the start of the semester. She is our new first grade teacher. So she had the opportunity to student teach with us, um, for the entire first semester with many of the students that she currently has in her classroom now. So, it's a very easy transition. From the beginning, the students took to her very well, um, really great at forming relationships, and then also working with the staff. So I'm very lucky to, very grateful to have Alexa join us currently. And then Cassie is going to be our new second grade teacher. She is going to start on the thirty-first. So her and the long-term staff who are in there now, they're going to kind of take team it for that first week, for a nice, slow, soft transition for the students. And then the following week in February, she will take over in there full-time. And I will say, it's, you know, with both of their interviews, it's just been very refreshing to have such positive energy and just hopeful mindsets. You know, I think things are really heavy in education right now, and it's just really refreshing to have two individuals joining us, um, in our primary grades, who just possess this energy and passion for teaching that, um, is much needed right now during this time. So, welcome to both of them, I'm very grateful to have them.
Yes, you're welcome.
I don't know if you guys want to add anything, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you guys have any questions for them or anything like that.
No questions, I'm just really excited for this opportunity and really glad I get to be part of the district.
Yeah, I would say the same, and I'm excited to come back to El Goma.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, we're very pleased that you chose to came back, come back to this district. Wonderful.
I feel like it was a little bit of fate. Um, all right, January bright spots, just a few other things at the elementary school. I feel like this first part of January has really flown by. Probably remember me telling you a little bit about the fifth and sixth grade winter dance that was held right away, um, at Friday after we came back from break. There were sixty-six fifth and sixth graders who attended. They, uh, collected money to donate to the food pantry. So next week, we are going to be delivering a hundred and thirty-two dollars to the food pantry, um, here in the area. So that was, um, really nice touch to the dance, a lot of fun. They had a photo opportunity, they had a parent taking photos. There was food, more food than you could imagine. The playlist was very well thought through, um, and approved, so everything was, um, just perfect. It was really a good, a good time. Also wanted to share a little bit about our chef salad. Again, I had mentioned that we were going to be extending that to third and fourth grade as an option. In addition to, or I should say, in, in addition to, um, taking the hot lunch main entree. And it's been a success, we started right at the beginning of the semester. I think the first week, we averaged between all third through sixth graders upwards of like seventy-five per day that first week. So that's a good forty percent of our third through sixth graders who have taken that option. So it's been a positive. We've kind of been experimenting with different options, like taco meat and protein and things, popcorn chicken, that was a huge hit. So, um, it's definitely something that is here to stay, so, positive. And then I also just wanted to, um, just give a shout-out to the elementary staff. It's just kind of been crazy, you know, coming back from break. We had a lot of staff absences, a lot of student absences, just a lot of uncertainty and inconsistency and things we kind of had to work through on the fly, day by day, and everyone has just been phenomenal. Team players, couldn't ask for anything else, so just thank you for that. And then my last agenda item is just an update on our state assessments. It's set to the year, where all of it kind of comes to a head. So we're preparing, starting to prepare for the forward exam. ACT for eleventh graders, that'll take place on March eighth. We also have the DLM, and we also have the ASPIRE. So it kind of starts now and it doesn't stop until, well, I think we're going to try to get everything done this year before spring break. So, we have a couple months of heavy assessments and then we should be in the clear, but that's what I have.
Okay. All good. That dance must have been.
It was so fun.
Yes. I bet. Yeah. Sounds great. Any questions for Katie? Okay, we'll keep moving, middle school, high school principals report and Pathfinder update.
So I just want to talk about semester one, um, focusing really on the seniors. Um, since now, as you know, crunch time to make sure they have other credits in. But, um, I was crunching some numbers today and I thought it was really interesting. So we're graduating our biggest class out of Pathfinder this year. And it made up twenty-one percent of the senior class, of the kids that are graduating from Pathfinder. So I just, I was doing a lot of reflecting on that, about, it's clear that kids are craving, you know, a different kind of education. They want some autonomy in their education, more of a personalized learning focus. So yeah, that, to me, was a bit of a shocker, but, um, four of them are fully done already, and six more should be done before spring break, so, um, that's really great. And then of the kids that are in the legacy school, twenty of the thirty-seven of them are not even on full days this semester because they've got their credits done or mostly done. And, um, I would say of those twenty, probably fifteen of them are doing work studies. So, they're getting out there early, they're able to get the experience, um, before they even graduate, which is really, really great to see. The second part is Golden Apple Award nominees. So I'm just going to read off the names of people that were nominated this year. Um, elementary school, there's Chuck Bredel, Rosemary Clark, Lindsay Harmon, Emily Krieger, Mina Cruz, Peter Schmidt, Danielle Schultz, Tammy Smith, and Rachel Vandervoss. Um, at the high school, we had Annette Combe and Clarissa Lewis. And then Abigail Robinson from El Goma Venture Academy. So it was really great to see, um, such a big representation this year.
And they all deserve it.
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
Any questions for Karen? Katie, I don't know why I keep saying Katie. I knew of Karen. Probably because there are so many Kates, yeah. Okay, special ed report, Marie.
Sure, I have a really quick report tonight. And part of what I was going to talk about is later in the agenda, like, just the recommendation for certain caps for open enrollment, one being for speech and language, with this already having a very high case load, um, suggesting a cap of five. And then, a couple of specific grade levels, uh, being the first graders going into second grade and sixth graders going into seventh grade.
Could you repeat that again?
Sure, sorry, I'm speaking wrong.
No, it's all right.
My recommendations for open enrollment caps were for speech and language, a cap of five. And then for the specific grade levels of the first graders going into second grade, and then the sixth graders going into seventh grade.
For those speech, language, Karen?
No, two separate.
Okay.
That sixth grade and the seventh grade class, I think we've been capping them since they were in third grade.
Just to hide.
It's just a very high, high, high needs class.
Okay. So just the special education spaces in general?
Yeah, for open enrollment, yeah. And then my only other thing is, um, I've probably talked about staffing month after month, but we continue to have a need for paraprofessionals or special ed teachers. So as an admin team, we were just trying to creatively think about, um, how we could think outside of the box to attract or retain paras. They don't really have a magic wand right now of what that answer is, but just, um, just know that we're kind of trying to think outside the box of how we could kind of be competitive in that area.
What are the, um, educational and background requirements for a para?
Really, uh, we recommend an associate's degree, but it's not required. There's different, uh, pathways that we could kind of, um, consider. Somebody qualified paraprofessional, whether it be an assessment, um, a certain amount of credits, post-secondary credits. The three avenues, if you're to either the associate's degree, post-secondary credits, or passing an assessment.
So. Anybody out there listening? Okay, any other questions, Marie? Okay. Live El Goma monthly update.
Hello, everyone.
That would be you.
From, Derek Fowles here. One thing I would say about Live El Goma that's exciting is the El Goma Methodist Church, and students from El Goma Venture Academy are teaming up to improve some of our housing conditions in El Goma. So housing has been one vital condition that we really have been tapped into, um, since we started our Live El Goma efforts. And thanks to these two entities teaming up, they are starting to improve some of the housing that our families currently live in. So whether that's taking down a garage, um, that is, you know, maybe not, um, very conducive for conditions and rebuilding it, or replacing doors, windows, repainting, that sort of thing. So, now with winter, um, it's a lot of, um, grant applications and the students are out and about. They, I know they went to the Community Development Committee of the City Council of El Goma and requested some funds, so that they're really getting practice of what it takes to fill out a grant and, um, what it's going to take to, uh, funding-wise and volunteer-wise to improve some of our housing conditions for our families. But then, when spring comes, we're going to see them out and out in the community, continuing that work. So, very excited about that partnership. That was really it for Live El Goma this month.
Yeah, that sounds wonderful, the fact that they're involved in the entire process of, of getting the grants and, and having to go to the committees and all of that. That's, sounds wonderful. Great education for them. Okay. El Goma Venture Academy update.
We have, um, at semester, we had seven new students enrolled. So our totals are thirty at, at this point in the school year. We do have one open enrolled student from a different district, so, um, that's, that's a new thing for us. And it's been, I don't know, the first week has been really exciting to see the new students, with some of our students have been there for a semester and how that's working out. It's pretty incredible to see the mentorship. One thing we asked our students is how we wanted to be structured. And our students are loud and clear that they really love the seven-twelve model. Our high school students really like being in the same space with their middle school students and vice versa. So we're trying to, um, make sure that we continue to structure it in that way. Or, we also have our mid-year report that's due to DPI. Remember that a public charter school is about innovation. We have a lot of autonomy to create and try. And, um, and my job as the liaison kind of between, um, the governance board of El Goma Venture Academy and this board is to study good practices. And our math scores are really phenomenal. They have been since the start, they continue to be pretty great, um, all. But I think one student is, um, on what's called Alex Math. And we've seen, um, over sixty, I think it's six, sixty-eight percent of our students or so have, are far down the track of where they should be at this point for the school year. So we have just extremely great, um, math scores. And that's something that I think the legacy school is, is learning about and thinking about. And how we can utilize, you know, some of our math teachers as facilitators of math language. When students are struggling on a certain topic, they can pull them aside and, um, work with them on that topic while the students are learning online on these math concepts. So, it's been proving really great, it's one that we're going to keep a little eye on. But, again, um, I don't know, all is well in the Venture Academy, you know, as we build. We learn things, we fail forward, we readjust. But it's exciting to see some of the independent learning that Kevy Horn was addressing before. So, that's it.
Yeah, along, along with the innovation comes accountability. I mean, that's the thing the state gives you, is, gives you the ability to be innovative in the way that the students are taught. They still have to meet the same standards, and you're still accountable for that, so, it is.
Yeah, there's lots, lots of reporting for DPI. We had a mid-year report, so the first five years of opening a charter, you, you know, they want to learn from you, they want you to be autonomous. There are certain criteria that you have to have, so of course, you have to have a reading and a math, um, standard. Our students, ninety-eight percent of our students, actually, this is another, a staff from mid-year, ninety-eight percent of our students showed growth in both reading and math scores with the same district assessments that we take, which is called A-Read and A-Math. So that was really great to see. And all these reports are submitted to DPI, um, by the end of January. And they keep a really close eye, and just because they want us to be a little innovative and try new things and see what's working and what's not working, and ensure that we keep communicating to our legacy school board, so that we can adopt best practices for all of our undergraduates as well.
Yeah, sounds great. So far, so good. Keep up the good work. Okay, um, we didn't have any committee meeting in January, but we did have one last December. That was, the minutes weren't done.
Right.
So. Anything you need to report on that?
Um, one thing I have, just my top.
The only thing I have is, and I talked at the meeting itself, I, I think Brenda, I don't know if you just maybe said it to the wrong, you know, maybe I didn't get it. I wanted the curriculum on that course and some substance that's going to be in this, just so I have a heads-up on it. So if you could get that to me, I'd appreciate that.
Can I give a little bit of background of what the course is so that everybody?
Oh, absolutely.
Sure. So I just presented to the committee just to get some feedback on a course that we're offering this semester. I appreciate the feedback I received. We did adjust the name. So the name is now Dialogue in a Complex World. So the goal of this course is to have productive conversations with people who think differently than ourselves. That's the main goal. So basically, we, the students have shown a ton of interest of wanting to talk about what's happening in the world. They want to make sense of it. And so the goal is to really explore the complexity of issues, to not simplify it into what we often do, which is dualistic thinking, like it's pro-con, this or that. But instead, we're just really staying in this complexity to understand all the facets of the issues. It's very student-focused in that they're going to let me know what topics they want to talk about. We're going to together find the resources because they need to learn how to dissect information and understand where it's coming from. And yeah, the, the whole goal of it is to just really improve our communication and our ability to have hard conversations. So we've had a week in already and it's going really well. The students are really excited. It is an elective course, meaning that students choose to be in it. It's not a requirement. And we're just spending a lot of time building the culture of the space right now. Because in order to have these types of conversations, you need to be able to trust each other and be able to kind of see the humanity in each other, really. So that's what we're doing in these, we'll spend quite a bit of time doing that. So. But in terms of the curriculum, it's really going to be an ongoing building of the process and students will be involved in that. So.
Great. Any other questions? How many students are enrolled?
We have 12.
Yep. Good times. Okay. Did you have anything more to say?
Nope, nope.
Okay, current COVID statistics. Nick, how are we doing with?
Six, two, two for a total of 10.
What?
I know, we were up to like 40.
Six at the elementary, two at the middle school, high school, two staff.
We were up pretty high, but we just came.
So it's the same exact thing that happened last year. So it post-break, spikes, and then goes down. So you see it happening all over the place where schools are shutting down is because not so much about students not being there, it's staff.
Right.
Right? So much to what Katie said before, we haven't experienced that threshold. I don't see that happening just because of what we've learned over the course of all of this. It's basically the trend lines from last year and this year are identical. So I feel pretty confident about what we're doing. Certainly, we've done things internally. I think that helps our response to it so that we don't have to go down the road of, you know, canceling classes or doing virtual for X number of days, which other places are doing. So it's a consistency thing. That's what we've been trying to do.
Okay. Questions for Nick? All right, we'll keep moving on. So we sort of got into this a little bit with Marie, discussing the number of regular education spaces available for 2022, 2023. This is all regarding open enrollment, correct?
So for regular education, we have never.
Never, right, yeah. And, and then the special education spaces available, we are saying we are going to restrict, well, cap?
Cap. So we're full right now in current first grade going into second.
And full current sixth grade going into seventh. And then we have to cap speech and language at.
So accepting no more than five.
Accepting only up to five new. Okay. Any questions or further conversation on that?
I just wanted to know if that's specific to open enrollment.
Yeah, just open enrollment, correct. Has nothing to do with any in, in district students. Okay, admin proposal for mental health days.
So I know that we've talked about this ongoing. Certainly, I think it's proven that everybody's a little stressed beyond belief and then when you have to deal with, you know, just what I call current COVID. And knowing that extending the school year because you take another day off during the spring would not be something that people like. We came up with doing something on Fridays, whether we do it once a month or twice a month. I'm hoping through that. But other districts actually did it last year and felt it to be very beneficial. So if we go to school, if we have a half-day on a Friday, it counts as a full day and we don't have to add any time. We need our instructional minutes. But then we also obviously are responding to a little debrief time for staff and students. And I guess I just left it open to maybe hear your thoughts about whether you want to do that. Twice a month in February and twice in March, just because spring break is so late this year.
Yeah, winter is.
It's April 11th through 15th.
Into April.
So once we come back from spring break, there's really not much, I mean, there's a month, less than a month of school left. So. Maybe if we start, we plan for one on February 11th and March 11th. We can always add a half a day in on a Friday or wherever.
Well, these would be, the teachers would be here, but the students would not be.
I mean, everybody would be here for half-day.
Okay, students would be here half a day.
Correct.
Well, obviously, we have to, I think, for just the family's sake, come up with some solid dates so the planning can be done because that's always. But I also have been very concerned. I mean, keeping this school district open, which is marvelous, has required a huge effort by everybody, the staff, in terms of pitching in and covering things and all of that. So, yeah, I think.
So it's actually the same two dates, so February 11th and 25th. Basically, they're either the Friday and then March 11th and 25th, if you wanted to do two of one.
I think so.
Unless you want to do one at a time.
We can do that and not lose our minutes. And still have enough minutes for at the end of the year.
Correct.
And give some teachers some well-needed.
Yep. And if we remember back, I mean, not that long ago, that's how we used to do all of our professional development.
Yes, there's always half-day.
Right.
So then now that we moved it all to start, before the start of the school year, now we don't do that, but it's a practice that has been around for a long time. People are familiar with it. So, you know, it doesn't hamper you from anything. So by putting in that half a day, you get to count as a full day. Because you're serving one.
Right, right.
So it is.
I think it's a good idea.
So Sturgeon Bay did it last year. They had a lot of success. We got a lot of positive feedback about it.
Well, I think it's.
Just gives people.
And obviously, we get that out to parents so they know for whatever the plans they have to make right way ahead of time.
So the dates again?
February 11th and 25th, and March 11th and 25th. If you want to do it, you know, twice a year. Unless you want, if you just want to say, let's just do a woods and do the 11th of each month.
I think that the staff deserves to.
Are you sure?
To have that time. I mean, that would be my personal thought, but.
I agree.
We will be addressing it in action if anybody has additional discussion on that. Okay, we're going to move to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of December 20th and the curriculum committee meeting minutes of December 16th.
I so move.
All second. Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abe? Did you say aye? I think he's frozen. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion for the bills that were presented to us.
So move.
Motion made by Mick. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joanne. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to, in terms of designating the number of regular education spaces, we will not have any limits for the regular education spaces.
So I move that we not have any limitations.
Okay, I'll second.
Motion by Jennifer, seconded by Joanne. Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then I'd like to, a motion to limit the education spaces available for the class of first going into second, sixth going into seventh as closed, and limiting, capping the additional speech and language slots to five.
I so move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Jennifer on that, seconded by Ann. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the donation from Brad and Sean Schmiling in the amount of $2,250 for Wolf Den.
I so move.
I so move.
All right. Motion made by Dave, seconded by Joanne. Questions or discussion on that? Other than a big thank you for a very generous donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the administrative proposal for Mental Health Fridays, two in February and two in March. The dates, 2/11, 2/25, 3/11, and 3/25.
I so move.
Okay, go ahead.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Ann. Any further questions or discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the purchase of an ADA compliant bus to replace number 92, not to exceed $110,000.
I so move, Ben President.
Motion made by Dave. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joanne. We did get a packet on that, I mean, a whole thing. And it's certainly not in my expertise to evaluate it, but. Any further discussion or questions on that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the SRO trial period from February to June.
I so move.
Motion made by Joanne. Do I hear a second?
Would you say?
The school resource.
Oh, the school resource, okay.
Joanne, Joanne and Ann. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I don't believe there's any recommended modifications of COVID medication. Okay, I need a motion to, oh, we're not quite ready for close. A request for future agenda items. Okay, now I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute 19.85, subsection 1 CEFNI for the purpose of personnel matters, hires, staffing, resignations, administrator evaluation, and board evaluation.
I so move.
Motion made by Joanne?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann. This is a roll-call vote. Dave?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
I also say yes.